Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We call to order the Rutherford County School Board, October 12th, 2022. Our first item on the agenda is our Pledge Allegiance by Mr. Jacob Sparks. Mr. Sparks, if you'll come forward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So for our moment of silence today, if we will remember Mr. Estes, he is recuperating today, and we just need to remember him in our thoughts and prayers. We've got one member that I'm sure that's stuck in traffic, so y'all bear with us. We may roll around the agenda a little bit today. So, first on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Move to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone like to abstain? Motion passes.
All right, next we have recognition. Thurman Francis Arts Academy earning National Blue Ribbon Award. So there were 297 schools nationally that were recognized as a National Blue Ribbon School. One of our own, Thurman Francis, under the direction of Mr. Jeff McCann, was one of the six schools in the state of Tennessee. Congratulations, and call you up here to give your team some shout-outs and recognition as well, but congratulations from all of us. And I believe the reception's November 3rd and 4th, so we wish you all the best at that reception. I'm going to fly up that morning and fly back that afternoon.
That's awesome.
So I'll try to be there to support you guys.
Great, thanks. Thanks, board members. Just FYI, if you don't know what the National Blue Ribbon Schools Award Program is, just a little background on that, it is a product of the U.S. Department of Education. It's been around since about 1982, and it's just a program where they recognize exemplary schools throughout the country in one of two categories. And let me make sure I get them right. So I gotta consult my notes here. Okay, the one of two categories. One is exemplary high-performing schools, which are schools in each state that have the highest achievement scores, classified typically as the top 15 percent, but we're even a little higher than that. We're in the top 5 percent really in the state. Or you can be what's known as an exemplary achievement gap closing school, which means you've made the greatest advances, top 15 percent again, in closing subgroup achievement gaps in ELA in math. And we typically don't have a whole lot of subgroup gaps at our schools, so we definitely fall into the former category of exemplary high-performing schools. And how the process works is you're recognized by somebody at the State Department who nominates you, and then they put you through a whole process of applying, and it's a pretty lengthy application. It takes about a year to write it and submit it, and then you're chosen or you're not for the awards. And we were very grateful and thankful to be chosen this year for a Blue Ribbon Schools Award. I think we're one of maybe three or four schools in this district that have won that award at one time or another, so we're very humbled, honored by it, and really hope to bring that back for the, to just add to the reputation of our district, and really to help our school sell our brand a little bit better, because believe it or not, a lot of people still don't know much about Thurman Francis Arts Academy as being a high-performing magnet school in our district. But there's no secret to our success. The secret is hard work, and a lot of it by these, a lot of these folks standing over here, members of our staff and leadership. We would've had a bigger crowd, but I don't think Mother Nature wanted that to happen today, so. But also the hard work of our students, let's not negate that. Our students work super, super hard, and under a lot of pressure from a lot of areas to do that. So, and, and again, finally, our great parent support plays a huge part in that, too. So, we're super excited about this and humbled, and just thanks, board, for recognizing us for that tonight.
Want to talk about your pin?
Well, I'll tell you, I was just telling the folks over here, this little pin right here, this was just a freebie. It was sent to me by a company that basically wants me to buy a bunch of these for my, for my staff. It's not an official Blue Ribbon thing. I hope to get that when we go to Washington next month, but we'll see. But, so I thought it was cool, though, so I'll put it on.
Thank you so much. Everyone knows how special Thurman Francis is, and thank you for hosting us last month with Chairman Representative White, and we love Thurman Francis, and we, this year, we're gonna have a new focus on fine arts.
Awesome. I love it.
Mr. McCann, would you have your people that are here stand up?
I would love to have that. Would all my staff members please stand up and be recognized by the folks that are here? Thanks. Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much.
And I apologize, I was so excited to announce Thurman Francis, I skipped the consent agenda, so, sorry.
So, could I have a motion for consent? Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone wish to abstain? Motion passes. I think we have visitors next, and this is gonna be very informative. Ms. Sienna Hall is coming forward, and is gonna talk to us about our PECA.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sienna Hall, and I serve as the President of Rutherford Education Association. I'm here tonight to submit to you a petition containing signatures of Rutherford County educators regarding collaborative conferencing. As this board knows, Tennessee law recognizes that a collaborative relationship between the board and its professional employees will insist in the establishment and maintenance of an educational climate and working environment that will attract and retain highly qualified professional staff. Collaborative conferencing, or PECA, recognizes the obligations of the board and its teachers to collaborate on matters relating to the terms and conditions of professional employment, service, and sets forth the process whereby we can work towards producing an agreement or memorandum of understanding on issues such as salary, insurance, and working conditions. We in Rutherford County are very fortunate to have gone through this process in the past, and recently had a valid memorandum of understanding. Your ratification of our prior MOU affirms to educators in Rutherford County that you value our work and our opinions. We appreciate the opportunity to collaborate on matters that are essential to attracting and retaining highly qualified professional staff, so that together we can achieve the highest possible educational standards in our school district. So why am I here before you tonight with another round of signatures requesting to start the process again? The answer is quite simple. The law puts this burden on educators to obtain signatures every three years and to submit these signatures to you in the specific month of October. We are proud to report we have obtained nearly 1,000 signatures this year. As the board knows, under the law, once this petition has been submitted to you, the board then has the duty to appoint an equal number of board members and professional employees to serve on a special question committee, who will set up the conditions and particulars of conducting a confidential poll of all eligible professional employees. The confidential poll is a vote by teachers about whether they would like to engage in collaborative conferencing. As President of the Association, I would be honored to accept an appointment to be on the special question committee if the board sees fit. Again, thank you for accepting this petition, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, next item.
All right, next we have textbook adoptions, tab two. So the textbook selection committees for adoption of textbooks. The names and qualifications of the following individuals are being submitted for the appointment to the 2223 Mathematics Instructional Materials Committee upon board approval. The appropriate forums, Educational Document Form 2150 are attached. The document includes the educators, parents, and experts to serve on each respected committee. Recommended approval, motion to approve the individual submitted to serve on the 2223 Mathematics Instructional Materials Committee as presented.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve. Thank you, Ms. Breton.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone wish to abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you, and I'll add that Dr. Chastain will have the list of when the oaths and all those things, and our first oath and swearing-in ceremony begins next Monday for a group, and I'll send you the entire schedule once we have it finalized today.
All right, number nine, Riverdale High School Coca-Cola Contract, tab three. Riverdale High School requests approval of the attached contract with Coca-Cola. This is their renewal agreement with Coca-Cola, in which they will pay Riverdale High School 5,000 per year, up to five years, and allow a percentage of sales to go to Riverdale High School. In exchange, Riverdale exclusively offer Coke products. Recommended approval, motion to approve the renewal of the Riverdale High School Coca-Cola contract as presented.
Any questions or comments? I'm just gonna say, they're lucky it's not Pepsi. They may not make any money. I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Darby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone wish to abstain? Motion passes.
All right, next we have legal, tab four. So this is in your manila folder. The first ones we're gonna look at are Ada County transfer students. So the first student, discipline student number one. So the board's been requested to admit a transfer student under discipline from another school system. The student was remanded for making threats towards a teacher. According to Policy 6.318, the board may approve admissions when a student transfers from another school system while under suspension or expulsion. So recommended approval, motion to deny. The Ada County transfer for student number one is presented.
Any comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tidwell and Ms. Rosales. Do we need to do an individual roll call on this?
Thank you.
No? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone wish to abstain? Motion passes.
All right, and one thing to note, whatever day that the school system that the student is enrolling from, so if the student was expelled or remanded for a calendar year, they would then be eligible, that student, just like a normal student, once that calendar year expired. So if a student was remanded in March, we deny, they can then enter as a normal student with us in March, so. All right, so discipline student number two. So the board's been requested to admit a transfer student under discipline from another school system. The student was remanded for making a threat. According to Policy 6.318, the board may approve admissions when a student transfers from another school system while under suspension or expulsion. So recommended approval, motion to deny admission for Ada County transfer for student number two as presented.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to deny.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Breton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or wish to abstain? Motion passes.
All right, so now we have discipline student number three. Board's been requested to admit a transfer student under discipline from another school system. The student was remanded for possession of e-cigarette. According to Policy 6.318, the board may approve admissions when a student transfers from another school system while under suspension or expulsion. This recommendation, student to be admitted and placed into alternative school as presented.
I'm gonna do a roll call on this one. Can we get a motion? Can I? Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Hopkins, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
Ms. Breton?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
No.
Mr. Tidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Reed, I think we're ready. So we had some discussion about a student situation in the September 28th board meeting, and Mr. Reed's gonna give us some guidance and some motions as well with our steps through that. In your package, you do also have, in that discipline packet, a copy of our student discipline policy 6.317. And so, Mr. Reed, are you gonna get into any of that, or am I okay to go over that?
You can go over that.
Okay.
Without naming anyone by names.
Yep. If you will look at 6.317, here's our student disciplinary hearing authority, where we are right now. So at the bottom of page one, that dictates what the discipline hearing authority can do. So they can affirm the decision of the school, order removal of the suspension, order removal of the suspension upon such terms as deems reasonable, sign the student to alternative school, or suspend the student for as best as a five period of time. Then it gets to line four, which is where we get to if the student, principal or principal teacher, and in this case, the principal appealed, but you'll see what the board options are. One, affirm the decision of the hearing authority. Two, modify the decision to a lesser penalty. Or three, grant a hearing before the board. And so then you will see below, if the board chooses to grant a hearing, it may, A, affirm, B, modify in any manner, or C, impose a more severe penalty. Mr. Young, and there was some discussion last night about where does this come from? This comes from our Tennessee Code Antenated 4963401. So if you'll flip to the third page of that, you will see that this is in writing exactly our policy, follows the portion also. In theory, it would be a good idea to be able to bring both parties together and be able to discuss some of those things. That would require a legislative change to be able to do that. So I just wanted to bring the actual wording of the law to your attention so that you had a copy of it as well. Mr. Reed, it's all yours.
Yeah, we've had some questions from board members on this. Obviously, I think the board took action on September 28th that had an effect that was not intended by some of the board members. So while you took action to overturn the decision of the DHA, that's really did not have the effect of what some of the board members were intending to do that night. So, an option which is available to the board, if you choose to do it, is the board can vote, move tonight for to rescind the prior board action that was taken on disciplinary case number three in Sorets Creek. So you move to rescind that, and then that'd be step one. And step two would be, if you want, if any board member wants to make a different motion, they can make a different motion. For instance, if a board member wanted to make a motion to impose a lesser sentence than what the DHA had recommended, or even just have the child go back to school because of the, all the discipline that's already, already has happened at this point, you can do that. So it's a two-step process. If you want to rescind the prior board action, you would make a motion to rescind the prior board action on this disciplinary appeal. That has required the two-thirds vote to rescind it. So if you get two-thirds vote for that, a second motion can be made to impose a lesser sentence, which could include the child, the student going back to school based on the kind of time served with respect to what has happened already since this matter started. So that would be an option available to this board.
Is that the only option that is available? Because I have something else.
Okay, well, the, well, let me, I'll go back, and your options, if you want to rescind and change the board action they took on the 28th, the first step, you have to get motion to rescind, and that has to get adopted by the board by a two-thirds vote. That's step one. If you then want to take some other action in regards to the appeal, you can do that, but those are limited to the options that are set forth in your policy and state statute, which is either affirming the decision of the DHA, overturning the decision of the DHA, imposing a lesser sentence, or granting a hearing before the board. If you grant a hearing before the board, of course, that's gonna take a while to be heard, so you've got a time delay for that. So, and that was something that brought, was brought up last night. So it'd be a while before you, the board can take up a hearing just to get everyone here that night. So, those are the options that you're allowed to do, either affirming the decision of the DHA, overturning the decision of the DHA, imposing a lesser sentence, or granting a hearing before the board. So those are basically the four options you have in the second step of that process. So step one would be rescinding the action the board took on September 28th on that disciplinary hearing matter. That's step one. Step two would be taking such further actions as the board deems appropriate.
There was some confusion, I think. So can we get clarification on what the DHA decided specifically?
The DHA ruled for, basically, that it's gonna be remanded back to in-school, to out-of-school suspension. Not, he would not, he would not be sent to alternative school. It was a, as, out-of-school suspension, is what the DHA ruled, which was a lesser sentence than what the principal had imposed, because the principal had wanted the child sent to alternative school.
Okay, do we know how long the suspension was for from the DHA?
Five days, I believe.
Yes, it was five days. Thank you.
And I believe because the board overturned the decision of the DHA, we are technically out of compliance with policy right now, so we would probably have to do something. Would you not agree?
We need to rescind the vote, and then the board needs to take such further actions the board wants to do, and we can talk about what, you can discuss what you think is appropriate as far as what, among the board members, what you think is appropriate discipline in this case. So that could include sending the student back to school. It could be out-of-school suspension and give them credit for time served. It could be just affirming the decision of the DHA, or we can grant a hearing. If you grant, grant the hearing, if you, if you say, if you decide to overturn, if you decide to rescind, and then take the further step to impose a lesser sentence, the student could be back in school, you know, as soon as tomorrow.
If we, if the board decides to rescind, then overturning the decision of the DHA is off the table technically, right? Because it would enforce a-
Right, you, then you're, you've got a free slate to do whatever you want to do at that point.
The five days have already been served. Is that correct?
Yes.
How many days have been served?
So the incident occurred at the school on August the 29th. The remandment started on the following day, which was August 30th, and then the DHA hearing was on September the 8th. There was Labor Day in between there, so there, you know, that's, that's not eight days.
Right.
But the DHA said that he already served his out-of-school suspension between the time that the remandment was given by the school on August 30th till the hearing by the DHA on September the 8th.
Is the student still in alternative school, or is he back at school?
That is not clear. I don't think he was at school, at any school this week.
Yep, because at this point, when the board made the motion on September 28th, the student would've been sent back to alternative school technically, and the student at this point would be absent from alternative school. And those are all things we can go back and do either way with attendance, all those different types of options.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear, because we've never done anything like this before. The first thing we have to do is rescind the vote. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, we have to make a motion to rescind the vote, and then we come back and do the second thing.
Correct.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tidwell. Thank you, Ms. Rosales. Do we need to do a roll call, or we can just do?
You can do a voice vote. You can do a voice vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any wish to abstain? Motion passes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant a hearing before the board.
I second.
Do we need to take a voice vote?
I would, I would take a roll call vote on that.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
No.
Mr. Tidwell?
Is there any further discussion? Can we not have further discussion?
You can have discussion, yes.
Just have some concern. Maybe just get a little clarity here. So if we, as we're doing now, of course, we're going to grant a, it looks like, we're making a motion to grant a hearing. What are the, there were four options, right?
Yes.
One was to overturn. Can't do that. That's out, because we would, we'd be back in the same boat, we're just getting out of, so we can't overturn the decision of the DHA. That decision's off the table. Granting a hearing is an option. Affirming the decision of the DHA is another option. What's the fourth option?
Imposing a lesser sentence. If it goes to a hearing, you can impose a more severe sentence if you choose to, but that can only be done in the context of having a hearing on it.
You mind?
Yeah.
Where that fourth one comes in, it says overturn the decision of the DHA, and it's connected to that one, so it says, review, the board chooses to review the court if it modified the decision to a lesser penalty. So that's ultimately what the second one is, overturning the decision of the DHA, but it'd have to be to a lesser penalty.
I'm not trying to interrupt you, Mr. Tidwell.
No, go ahead. I'm open.
And, and I think it, this does need discussion, I agree with you. I want to remind this board that we are here to support our administrators, and we do not want to appear in any way that we do not support them in their attempt to have discipline in their school. I do not believe in any shape, form, or fashion that there's any maliciousness in our hearts in this board. But as a former administrator, I'm going to say to you, no administrator brings forth a remandment unless it is something that they have pondered over and something that they feel strongly about. We do not want the reputation of not supporting our administrators. If you don't take a look at this carefully, let both sides speak, both the administrator and the, and the child's family, then it's gonna look like we don't support our administrators.
I appreciate that thought, and your experience as well. Where it gets a little complicated for me personally is that the DHA is made up of administrators. So the DHA came to a conclusion, and the principal of the school came to a conclusion, both administrators, conclusions were different. Severity of the punishment is in question here, not whether or not the student deserved a punishment for the actions that was taken. The question now is, for me personally, is whether or not the severity of the punishment has already been served, as the student's now been, if I'm correct, you correct me, Monica, if I say this incorrectly, but the student's already been to the punishment that was given for the DHA. He's already met those requirements, which is why they made that decision that they did. And then now the student is actually out of school, neither in, technically, he should, he should be in alternative school, is where he has been quote-unquote "left at." So he is continuing his, his discipline action, whether deserving or not. So as to which side you fall on, it's, to me, it's more tricky. I understand if there's anyone that is for making sure that our teachers are, have a good, a good workplace environment, and I've asked Mr. Solomon how quickly we could look over the code of conduct, that is a priority for me. Has nothing to do with that. I have three young children, and if my child, I, when I'm reading these stories, these details about two different sides, and we're getting both sides, because that's what the DHA does, they're getting both sides, and looking over there, I'm putting my son or my daughter in there, and I'm trying to decide whether or not I feel like that's just or not. I feel like that's fair. So, for that reason, I am, my, my only concern with granting hearing, I, I like the idea of hearing from both. The only concern that I have with granting hearing is how much longer this student is going to be missing school, possibly unnecessarily, because we have to get together to have this hearing. And for that reason, I'm going to abstain.
Whether there's further discussion or not, so.
You want to finish, Thor-
Ms. Rosales? So, sorry, I need to clean my throat. So I appreciate your concerns on Caleb, they're valid. Thank you, Ms. Breton, for stating what you said. But what, there's details in here that we, that are not really out for discussion, that I will be interested to hear. And right now, we, we are only reading from what was given to us. I personally was not present when this happened, and I also was not present when the DHS made the decisions to hear the discussion from both sides. And granting a hearing will give the opportunity for all of us to come and hear both sides and be able to talk about the details that have not been discussed, that need to be addressed. So for that reason, I am going to say yes, grant a hearing.
Ms. Breton?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
No.
We probably need to talk about the date for that hearing, and I think Ms. Ridley had contacted the parents involved to get some available dates.
And I think Ms. Ridley had contacted the parents involved to get some available dates.
No, that's the other hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry. We'll get with the parents right away and try to get a date scheduled.
As quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. So, next up?
Next is the strategic planning and enrollment. Does anybody have any suggestions on how you want me to do it differently than last night? Because it is not the most entertaining and enthralling presentation that I've ever done, but it kind of is what it is with data, numbers, and zone maps.
It worked.
Yeah.
I thought it was great, too. We must be crazy. I liked it. I thought it was informative.
No, it was very good.
All right. So, just for anyone that didn't watch last night, during our work session last night, we are looking at all enrollments and our school board zones, so that we can see what our capacity is, where our enrollment is. We looked at our 25 elementary schools yesterday. We're going to look at our middle and high schools today. So, we'll take, we'll just go the opposite direction tonight. So, we are going to start with Laverne Middle School, and we're looking at Laverne Middle School. They have an annex that opened a year and a half ago. Laverne Middle School's enrollment, their capacity is 1,635, and their enrollment is 1,088. And so, we do have seats at Laverne Middle School. What is unique is that is a very high-needs demographic with English as a second language, and also with students in poverty. And so, we have a lot of intervention classrooms, a lot of ESL classrooms. So, yes, that would be your typical enrollment, but we have a lot of smaller classrooms in that setting as well. But that is an area that, looking at the north end, we, the board was great about looking at foresight to see where we would have room to grow. And you will see that zone pretty much covers this area right here. When you start getting over to the Smyrna Middle Zone, you're running into the same issue you ran into with John Coleman, that you were landlocked by the county line and also landlocked by the lake. And so, it would be a lot of travel in that area.
And Lake Forest is a community of 10,000-plus homes.
Is it still the largest in the state?
Still the largest.
Yeah. The largest in the state. So, that is Laverne Middle School. We will go down to Rock Springs Middle School. And just to give you an idea of Laverne Middle School, so I can give you where they're feeding into, you have Roy Waldron, Laverne Lake Elementary feeding into Laverne Middle. So, those are your two main, very little bit possibly of Cedar Grove and David Urie. But those are your main two. That gets us to Rock Springs Middle School. Rock Springs Middle School is one that has jumped quite a bit recently. It was overcrowded. We opened Rocky Fork Middle five years ago, relieved some of that overcrowding, and now it has jumped back up. So, Rock Springs Middle School has a capacity for 1,140. They're at 1,057. But you will see right beside that, there are three portables. And those portables are where some of our English, if not all of our English as a second language classrooms are, at Rock Springs Middle School. So, again, yes, the capacity may not be reached, but because of our needs of our students at that school, it is at capacity. And for that area, you are looking at elementary schools that are moving into Cedar Grove, David Urie, Rock Springs Elementary School. Now, we will go to Rocky Fork Middle School, who I was blessed to open, and has one of the weirdest zone lines you will ever see. So, here is Rocky Fork Middle School's zone, sits right beside Rocky Fork Elementary. There is room at Rocky Fork Middle School. So, Rocky Fork Middle School's capacity is 1,150, enrollment of 786, seats 364. And so, there is room, has been room, to move zoning boundaries over there. Where you will run into issues is that Rocky Fork Zone, 90-95% goes to Smyrna High School, and the rest is Stewart's Creek. So, if you were to move Rock Springs Middle, you would bring a third feeder school that would possibly go to a different school, which is fine. That's an option the board always has. But there, that was the reasoning for the zoning at that time. Any questions on those first three? All right. Now, we will look at Smyrna Middle School, which you will see has a large zone that goes through John Coleman, Smyrna Elementary, Smyrna Primary, David Urie, some of Stewart's Borough. Trying to think if I'm forgetting anybody. I think that's everybody that that covers. And it goes all the way pretty much over to the bridge that crosses over Percy Priest Lake on Jefferson Pike. And so, looking at Smyrna Middle School, it's another one that we've added on to, used to be the Smyrna High School. So, Smyrna Middle School includes the new addition, so 1,548. Yeah.
Nine-hundred.
Yeah. Smyrna Middle, 1,548. And then you've got only 877 students. But again, that is our highest poverty middle school, or second highest poverty middle school. It is our highest ESL percentage middle school. And so, you have classrooms, and on top of ESL, if you have students that perform below the 25th percentile on a reading diagnostic, then we have to serve them in what we call Tier Two and Tier Three Intervention, which is 30 to 45 minutes a day, and you have to have spots for students in that. So, when you have 70% poverty, being a Title One school, there is room. There are open classrooms here. But that is a demographic in a school that we wouldn't just want to put right at capacity. I know in looking at, what we looked at potentially was Smyrna Middle, actually, if you're looking at this zoning map, connects over to Blackman Middle School a little bit, and also part of Rocky Fork. So, you have some options, and I'm sure that's something the zoning consultant is going to bring up to redo some of this spot. Mr. Lee, where are we on Smyrna Middle School? Is it done?
All right, open.
Do what?
We're finished.
Finished. Awesome. Great. All right. So, now we will move to Stewart's Creek Middle School. So, Stewart's Creek Middle School, scrolling down, is 1,018. You'll see they're at 989. So, again, very close, no portables yet. They have fluctuated between that 900 to 1,000 for a very long time. It's shocking they haven't gotten there yet. With what the elementary school has, it is just a matter of time. We've been saying that for years, but it is truly just a matter of time when you have the elementary school sitting at almost 280 kids more than the middle school. And so, it's coming. So, you've got 989 students. You will again see where part of that issue, and I know that in talking about zoning, and I'm just giving ideas here to throw out there, you have parts of it as well that would be able to go to Rocky Fork Middle School to relieve overcrowding, but this area has been a triple Stewart's Creek area since the inception. And so, that was the reason the board didn't do that at that time. But if we're looking at enrollment items, it is a weird, so in opening Rocky Fork, it was very strange to drive down the road, see all the bus stops, because this is the road you get to, to go to Rocky Fork, and you drive through Seven Oaks, and none of those students were your students. But they could walk to the school. So, just some things to consider as we're looking at growth. Of course, we have Thurman Francis Arts Academy. That would be sitting right over here, that we talked about last night. And you'll see Stewart's Creek Middle Zone then connects to Blackman Middle Zone, the biggest middle school in the state of Tennessee, with an enrollment right now, being able to have 1,635 with an annex. And you will see their enrollment is 1,628. Did we put a portable there this year or not? No. So, I know they requested, but we did not put a portable yet there because of the annex, and look at how, again, like we have with Rockville High School, not trying to put portables at our newest annexes, but we're there for Blackman Middle School being at 1,628.
We do.
We do?
We have two.
Two. Okay, I thought they requested. Good. So, that is our enrollment at Blackman Middle School. Again, that is an absolutely huge zone. You have some options here, but again, you're looking at high school rezoning, and that's why we have asked that consultant to look at all these, because we're trying to keep schools connected with a high school and not just all over the place. We have Eagleville next. We talked about that portion last night, just a reminder. Eagleville in looking at being at 1,084 capacity and enrollment being at 969. Middle and high schools where they have a little bit of room to grow. They don't want to grow too much at the high school for classification purposes, but we have a little bit of room over there. All right. Next, we will keep going to Rockville Middle School, which is, I don't know exactly their number in the state, but they have to be in the top five because they are catching Blackman Middle School quickly. We have our addition, yes, our additions going on at Rockville Middle School. So, you will see our enrollment is 14, or our capacity's 1,494. The enrollment is 1,390. And so, just by adding the addition, we only have 104 seats. An issue we had with that addition is we still have the same number of bathrooms that the school did with 1,020, or 1,040. Is that correct? Is it done, completed?
All the classrooms are open now. We opened the last six classrooms. They're moving, as we speak, into them, and we'll start moving those portables to their new homes Monday.
Okay. Great. But you will see at Rockville Middle, that's another concern, because we just added on, and we're already somewhat out of room. The only place to rezone them would be, would be potential to Blackman Middle School, which is already, of course, overcrowded as well. And going next, we go to Christiana Middle School. So, Christiana Middle School goes all the way from parts of downtown, all the way to the county line of Bedford and Coffee County. Christiana, it is a strange zone. Christiana Middle School sitting at capacity of 925. It's one of our older middle school designs, and you will see they're at 1,049. And so, again, if you're looking at that western quadrant, really, everything west of 24 and north of 840, where that whole area, there's not a whole lot of room to rezone, and they're all over, we're at capacity. Whitworth Buchanan Middle School is not at capacity. Whitworth has a capacity of 1,040, and they are sitting at 763. So, you're, potentially could move everybody a little bit counterclockwise. Again, you were then going to split some of that area in looking at high schools, you're going to split Riverdale, Oakland, Segal, Rockville again, to where they're not going to their own zonings, which I know with Ms. Maxwell, that was something we really wanted to try to do, to give our schools a direct feeder school, and so you would be splitting some of that up, again. And then we continue to go to Oakland Middle School. Oakland Middle School has room as well, because we built an annex. Oakland Middle School has a capacity of 1,566 and an enrollment of 11,001. So, quite a bit of room to have growth at Oakland Middle School as well. So, we have the room on that side. Unfortunately, this side isn't growing as fast as this side.
We built an annex onto that.
We did. Yes. Yeah, right here. So, you can see we definitely have some, and looking, were we talking about Ms. Darby's new annex and other? Oh, are these the classrooms right here?
So, I was just trying to figure that capacity.
Yes. So, these 37 classrooms are the other to make up that 73. That's where that came from, that other portion right there. And then last, we will look at Segal Middle School. So, Segal Middle School, several of us toured when we went to the meeting with Representative White and Sparks. Segal Middle School goes all the way into downtown and all the way to the Wilson County line, and includes pretty much Wilson and Walter Hill. Now, stop doing that, I'm sorry. Oakland, Last Cassis, and largely the city schools as well, and part of Walter Hill. And so, you will see that Segal Middle School is over capacity. Their capacity's 1,047. They're at 1187, and we have quite a few portables over there. We have 13 portable classrooms. What did we name those? What did she name those? The cottages at Segal Middle School. When we visited, I could, and I, we called them something.
Oh, the cottages.
The cottages at Segal Middle School. So, has a nice ring to it. So, those are our middle schools. Any questions about our middle school? Just want to give you an overview of kind of where we have the room. The room is over here, and then a little bit in the middle is Rocky Fork Middle, and that's about the only room we have. And when we are looking at enrollment, something that is foundational to our middle schools, we operate in many schools. And so, basically, what you are looking at is that because our middle schools are so big, we break those students into smaller schools, where they have one math, one English, one social studies, one science teacher. So, it's a school within a school. That has our staffing a little bit different in our middle schools, so they're staffed a little bit differently than maybe a high school would be, but it allows us to keep a little bit more order in middle schools than traditionally would be in a middle school, because they're different. It's what I taught. They're different. All right. So, now let's look at high schools. All right. So, looking at high schools, we'll start the same. We'll start at the north end with Laverne High School. You'll see Laverne High School pretty much covers Laverne Middle School, Roy Waldron, and Laverne Lake, and Cedar Grove. Laverne High School is 2,134 capacity, enrollment of 2070. But again, we have seven portable classrooms there, largely because of high-needs demographic needing extra support services. And so, that is the school that we are looking at as well, continuing to grow, continuing to be overcrowded. Going over to Smyrna High School, again, large zone covering part of John Coleman Elementary, going to the Wilson County line across the lake, covers all of those elementary schools that you see there. And looking at their enrollment, them and Stewart's Creek are in our race right now for our biggest high school. And Stewart, Smyrna High School is capacity of 2,178 and an enrollment of 2,212. And they have 19 portable classrooms. So, three singles and eight doubles, 19 total classrooms with a very high-needs, large population that we have to do some of the similar resources. So, definitely a concern at Smyrna High School. The only areas you really have to rezone, you can't necessarily rezone until Laverne, because Laverne's overcrowded. We know Stewart's Creek's overcrowded. We know that Blackman's overcrowded. You have Segal over here, but there's not a lot of density in enrollment of students in this area right here. So, it would be a pretty big drive over to Segal High School. So, since we talked about that, let's look at Segal High School. Segal High School has a capacity of 2,244 and an enrollment of 1,864. So, we have 380 seats. Mr. Evans, do you know, I know we opened up some seats at Segal High School. Did we fill, I don't think we filled all of those, did we, with open enrollment?
Uh, pretty much.
Yep.
Segal High School's enrollment was roughly 1,800 students, and we opened up about 75 through non-exemption. I think we filled about 50 of those through non-exemption, so they should still have some room.
Okay. And just so that you're aware, that's one thing we talk about. When you see by state law, we have to permit, we have to put out how many seats we have at each school. Segal is one that we have more seats at than we publish, because that would require us to staff them more. And so, that is always an option. If we have 200 parents who say they want to be at Segal High School, then those would just be teaching positions that we would then need to add to Segal High School. But we publish what we have based on the staffing we have at that time. All right. Let's go, I believe, next to Oakland High School, and you'll see Segal High has, of course, part of the city schools. They have Walter Hill, Wilson, Segal Middle School, and a small, small section, I believe, of Oakland Middle School as well. Oakland High School, Oakland High School has a, where are we? Oakland High School has a capacity of 2,112 and enrollment of 1,992, with five portables, five double portables, so 10 total portable classrooms. And again, they have Oakland Middle School, Last Cassis, and a lot of the city school that feeds into that as well. Next, we get to Riverdale High School. Riverdale is, because of our rezone, which we had to do to relieve overcrowding from Rockville, capacity of 2,068 at 2,039. So, within 29 students. I envision over the next couple of years, if we have to move portables, and we're not really going to have any available to move, but I envision having to add portables till a possible addition is there, which nobody wants to do, but they'll simply just, they need them to have students.
And to remind everybody, the reason why the number's not higher than that-
Correct.
-is we allowed any student that wanted to stay at Rockville.
Correct.
Transportation. But that goes off. Each class, it's going to get bigger and bigger and bigger, because within three years, the rest of the kids that wanted to stay there will be gone, and now all the rest of the kids will be zoned there. It's like the old Christiana. So, that could be much, much higher.
They expect if all students would have come this year and not taken the grandfather option, that would have been 2,200 or just over. So, that's why I envision we're going to have to trade. Do we have any portables coming open? We don't, do we?
After we move the trailers from Rockville Middle, we will have nothing open.
I think so.
We have the same demand from last year that we didn't grant, that's going to be asking for portables again this year.
So, that's Rockville, or sorry, that's Riverdale. And now we will look at Rockville, which again borders portions of that. So, Rockville High School, we just rezoned last year, and as Ms. Maxwell said, allow grandfathering if they could provide transportation. It is a much more manageable, I say much more, it's better the number than it was last year. Their capacity's 2,310. They're at 2,296. They're not above 2,500. And so, it's still at capacity. We still are utilizing the 10 portable classrooms there, but we're not at 2,500. And talking to Mr. Lucre, it's a, it's a big difference even with 200 students not being in the building compared to what it is now. being in the building compared to what it is now. You see part of that zone as well. We possibly have a little bit of option to look at Eagleville and allow more students in the high school. And looking at high school, I know Eagleville's very hesitant to take a lot of high school students, and I hate to put it out there, but that changes their classification in athletics. I don't necessarily think that's something the board cares or does not care about, but it is something when you're looking at Eagleville to consider there in single A athletic competition. If we rezone, they move up. So, that's the concern Eagleville always brings up, so I, my due diligence of bringing that concern up. Next, we move to Blackman. So, Blackman High School. Blackman High School had a big jump out of our rezone, so their capacity's 2266, and they're at 2,208. And so, Blackman High School also has four portable classroom locations. That area continues to get more dense as we talk about it, and again, we don't really have outside of Segal High School, and that was a proposal last year. The board chose not to rezone more students to Segal High School. That's really the only option for Blackman High School, because Stewart's Creek and Smyrna are so overcrowded, is some of those students. Which gets us to Stewart's Creek High School. And Stewart's Creek High School is our biggest high school after the rezone for Rockvale Middle. Stewart's Creek High School's capacity is 2,420. They're at 2,407 right now, with six portable classrooms. Stewart's Creek High School has a larger ESL population than anybody would ever guess. We have added from two to three ESL teachers, and I believe we're at six now. I have to go, that may be off a little, may actually be more than that, but that's been in the last year and a half, because we've had so many students of English or second language move in. And so, even though they may have the capacity, they have, that's why they have portables for their smaller classrooms. They have jumped over 100 students from May. So, they are growing extremely quickly, just like many of our schools. There are one right now that has the largest growth rate. And I believe that is all of our high schools.
And that's where the 11,000 permits, that area, the green area there, basically, is where those 11,000 building permits have been pulled. It's going to happen over the next two, three years.
One thing that would be of interest to the board when it comes to portables, and I mentioned that 90%. The reason I start highlighting it 90%, usually when a school gets to around 85 to 90% is when Dr. Sullivan and I start seeing the requests for portables, and it's because they've begun the utilization already of using their storage rooms and their teacher workrooms for these small classes because of this ESL, because of the ESL, the other things that they have to do to help students progress. And that's when we start seeing the request for portables is about 85 to 90%. Usually, by the time they're at 95%, they're screaming at the top of their lungs, they got to have some help. The thing that we've been able to do the last 10 to 12 years is because we've continually built, we've moved the portables around, and we've been able to keep it at bay. With the program that we have right now, once we move these portables at Rockville for the next two years, we have nothing. And that's just something I'd like to bring out, because we've been able to hopscotch them around and move them, and after this move, starting January 1, there is nothing available for two more years, as far as portables go.
And the problem with that is when they're moved and they're reset and re-hooked up and everything, it's quite a bit, it's expensive. 25,000?
It is, and we've got some that, when it comes their time to leave their home, they're not going to another school. We're, they're, they've reached beyond their life limit, so we're actually at the position now of looking at replacing portables to continue to have a space available at that particular school. We've roofed them, we've rebuilt them, we've put new air conditioning systems on them, but even at that, there's some that have reached beyond their life expectancy. And if they were to become available because of a new construction for a new school or a rezoning somewhere, I would be in here asking to purchase a new one instead of moving an old one.
How much are they going for now?
About 120.
Plus hookup cost and all of that, correct?
And moving.
Well, once you move, once they have the cost, we spend $8,000 to $10,000 for ramps, we spend another $9,000 to hook them up, to electricity, we have to get fire alarm in them, paging systems, security locks. We spend about another 30 to 40 on top of what we, the purchase price to actually have them ready for students.
So, not only are we losing some, but we need more already, so we're going the wrong direction on both sides.
That would be a correct statement, yes, sir.
What's something that Sullivan mentioned earlier that I think is a good point, is even some of these schools that are not at capacity yet, there was a misunderstanding on my, at my end, and I want to make this clear, that, you know, if there's a higher ESL population or something, they still need more space. So, it's not even that they're at capacity, they just don't have the space, period. So, that's why you might have 10 portables at a school that's not at capacity, and then a school that's at capacity may only have two or three, because it just depends on the different needs of that school. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is exactly correct. And that's why I've always tried to steer the board to look at that 85 to 90% range is when we really need to be looking at doing something to alleviate it, because they've, they've already reached out to my department, and we've already gone in, and, you know, when they take a storage room and clean it out, we have to make it like a classroom. So, we're providing marker boards and projectors and all the things that a regular classroom has in these smaller spaces. And even if it is an ESL classroom or a small to help with reading, they still need marker boards, they still need all these things. So, we've already worked with that school to provide all these things.
And I'll tell you something that connects back to something we've talked a lot about, the third grader retention law. So, part of that is a three to one ratio for tutoring. And so, if we go to a three to one ratio for tutoring, we have the bigger spaces, but we're even going to break some of those up, because we have even more staff to fit in smaller spots. So, it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
That's all you can say, is it is.
Well, well done. Well, I have another question here, and this goes back from, it's not high school or middle school, but just looking like Stewart's Creek Elementary. So, there are 300 students over, where are those students at? Like, because of the portables, how many portables? I see seven classrooms, that's what is that, four, four doubles? I'm sorry, three doubles and a single. So, seven classrooms out there. Is there not a need for, I don't see how you're fitting 300 kids into seven portables.
Very creatively.
Very carefully.
Yep. And so, we have an extra gym class that is on what used to be the stage. We have split our structured setting CDC classroom into four different classrooms, so they have different pods within that structured setting. Every teacher workroom but one has turned into a classroom. The problem with that is we can only fit about 14 kids, even though we're funded for one to 20, so the other teachers then have to take where they may only have, so I think we, we got an email from a parent that was spot on with their concerns.
Yeah.
It does put extra, extra stress, which hurts morale at the school, because one teacher's going to have to take 28 kids, where the other one only takes 14, because that's literally all that can fit in that space.
Commissioner Phil Wilson and I toured Smyrna High School yesterday, and their one and only dance class that we have, I would say there's about 16 in that class, and she had to split the class in two for the, I mean, they have, it's because it's in a portable.
Yeah.
And they have a very small mirror, and she has to split it in two and let them do their little routine and practice and look in the mirror, and then they have to step aside, and the other ones come forward. So, I would encourage my fellow board members to go to Stewart's Creek Elementary and Smyrna Elementary next Thursday. There's already a group that's going through at 10 o'clock. If anybody would like to join them, I'm sure they would accommodate all of us. Thursday at 10 o'clock, I believe that's the 20th. Yes, ma'am. At Smyrna, I'm, excuse me, Stewart's Creek Elementary, Stewart's Creek Elementary. And then, when that is finished, we'll be going across the campus to the high school, and I'm sure they'll show us that, but they wanted us to look at some of the fine art programs that they had there, so.
That's this Thursday, not next Thursday?
The 20th, next Thursday.
The 20th. Oh, it is next Thursday, okay.
The 20th.
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 I won't be here. I will be out of town. So, I'll go on my own.
They'll still be overcrowded when you're here.
I mean, I've toured about five schools already, so I can just add two more to go.
So, do you want me to go over the?
I have one, I have one more question on the same topic. So, are we in need right now of portables? I mean, is that something that we need to actually, I know we're waiting on this study before we make any kind of big decisions about long-term plans, and maybe this is something.
I'll answer, because it's an unpopular opinion, yes.
The answer's yes.
It should be included in next year's budget.
They will be.
Okay.
And even if we wanted to build, we could.
They will be.
Takes forever. I mean, yeah, we do want to build, but we can't, we can't, we can't get it up fast enough.
Yeah, we're looking at two years.
Two to three years.
Pineview was the only one that we got up within one year.
And the thing you have to look at, and I know I'm dragging this out, when you start looking at getting further out, the component that we have to then look at is our busing situation, because we're limited by state law on how long a child can be on a bus. So, it gets very difficult in your, I'm going to call them, we still have some rural areas in our county, and it becomes very difficult to get those children picked up on a bus. Now, I can add another route, if you want me to, and put 15 or 20 kids on a bus, but you're looking at $65,000 to $70,000 to add another route. So, we're trying to maximize our route and pick up as many students as we can, and stay inside that timeframe. So, that's another component that plays into can you or can you not. Sometimes, yes, you can move the students, because the numbers work, but then the transportation doesn't work.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. So, yesterday, with my visit with Dr. Sutherland, I got it out, I got it out. She gave us some statistics from T double S double A. And so, our district has four schools and the top eight schools in the state. We have eight schools in the top 25. So, Stewart's Creek is number four with a 25% free and reduced. Rockvale is number six with a 29% free and reduced. Smyrna is number seven with a 51% free and reduced. Blackman is number eight with a 22% free and reduced. Laverne is number 15 with a 60% free and reduced. Riverdale is number 18 with 37% free and reduced. Oakland is number 20 with 33% free and reduced, and Segal is number 25 with a 27% free and reduced.
So, with that number, Laverne is technically the only Title I school, because it has to be 60.
Yes, correct. And Smyrna is very close.
Smyrna's very close.
Yes. And so, those numbers are based on enrollment with T double S double A reclassification, so even our smallest high school, which we consider Segal High School to be pretty small, because we have open seats there, is a top 25 size high school in the state of Tennessee.
Wow. Dr. Sullivan, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. You gave us those statistics that Ms. Sharp read to us. Can you send that to us?
I will, and I have an entire enrollment in a OneDrive ready for tomorrow for her.
Okay, that'll be great, so that we can all have it.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, she also gave us a breakdown between the males and females, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, from American Indian, Asian Black, Pacific Islander, white, Hispanic, and multiracial. The problem is, in the white category, they include Middle Easterners, Egyptians, and Koreans. So, arguably, they are ESL students. So, we have some other students that are not really being counted as ESL.
But I thought he said, and yesterday, when we, I asked that about the percentage of ESL that included the whole population, which included them, I thought it was an impression that you had said yes.
For direct serve ESL, they're going to count if they're getting direct serve ESL services, regardless of where they are in the racial portion, because they're, they're separate. The racial portion and their ESL services, so race, ethnicity, that those three nationalities or ethnicities were classified under white, Caucasian, non-Hispanic, Latino, for ESL, they could all be included.
They still get services.
Because they get services.
Yeah.
All based on the services they receive.
Okay.
But.
It's a clarification.
Yes. But when you're talking about minority subgroups, that section that Ms. Sharp just mentioned would not necessarily be included in your minority subgroup, which can.
For testing purposes. So, there's not an Asian category?
There is.
There is. So, Koreans, well then, I guess because they're in South, okay.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions?
No, but I would like to thank Mr. Tidwell for continuing to pursue this Stewart's Creek Elementary thing, because, folks, we've got to do something. We have got to do something about Stewart's Creek Elementary and Blackman Elementary. You need to put that at the forefront of your thinking. We may have to rezone. I, and I know you probably all got that really nice email, that, that lady was very kind, and, but she was right on point. I tried to answer her, and there were some things she didn't know, but that's okay. You know, I, I tried to fill her in, but we have got to face facts. Something has to be done for those two schools. So, be thinking.
I agree, Ms. Sheila.
Yeah. And she even admitted, if you have to rezone, you have to rezone.
Rezone, rezone, and we may have to.
I think the problem.
I hate it, but.
I think part of the problem with, especially the elementary schools, though, I don't, there's really no real room. Isn't that what we talked about yesterday?
There's not a lot of places to rezone them.
That's what I'm saying, there's just.
Everybody goes south towards Rockvale, just for the time being. It's about it. Yep.
And there's no buildings.
I, coming online either.
I know. So, it's a.
It's a big problem, yes.
We've got our work. Yeah. We've got our work cut out for us, for sure. Do you want to do a director's date?
Yeah, financial report, we don't have anything. Interns update, we covered yesterday. Director's report, I just have three very quick things. October 19 is a teacher work day, and so, I appreciate the board approving that last year in our calendar. That'll be one of the things, we have our calendar committee that starts next Tuesday to bring you a recommended calendar by the end of December for the next school year. And that is one of the things that I'll be asking the calendar committee to look at is to continue to add teacher workdays. That's something that our teachers need, and that we utilize that outside of money that everybody, what can we give? We can give time, and that's something that we can make sure that we utilize through our calendar. We have ways to be creative, just like a school has ways to be creative with their master schedule. So, October 19 is not a day for students, it is a day for our teachers. I've given our principals the direction to use an hour to two at the maximum of their own, because the rest of the time is intended for a teacher work day, and it needs to be used for a teacher work day, so teachers have time to work. We also have.
State.
Yes, yes. With state wording, it is a, a day that is for teacher in service and those things, yes. We also have parent teacher conferences next week, Tuesday, Thursday, elementary, middle and high school. That is Tuesday, Thursday. We have our retreat that starts tomorrow, so we will start at 3 o'clock at Evans Mill. And the other thing I want to bring up, because it's unfortunate we can't be there, but we didn't know about it till last week, so thank you to the county commission. They are honoring a former principal, Mr. Bud Rakes, from Smyrna High School tomorrow night at the commission meeting, where our presence was requested, but we have our retreat. Ms. Sharp and I talked about it last week.
There's no way we can get back in. Oh, what a bummer.
But thank you to him for his service. Actually, Mr. Gill is going to represent Rutherford County, who was his director and colleague during that time, so he's going to represent us. Mr. Rakes graduated from Smyrna High School in 1956. He was a principal from 1973 to 2011, and had over 10,000 graduates, so definitely a well-deserved honor for him.
Yes, absolutely.
I want to mention something real quick, because you made me think of this, and I'm sorry, I remissed that, I didn't mention this as well. We lost a very good man at Riverdale High School, Coach Stephen Williams. I knew him when he was Coach Williams at Central Middle School. My sons ran for him, and he was just a great guy and a wonderful spirit, and he loved And he loved teaching, and he loved Riverdale, and he loved his kids. And unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to go to his visitation or his funeral because it is this Thursday and this Friday, and I'm going to be at the retreat. But I just wanted to say that we're going to miss him. Dear man and a good friend.
We also lost another employee from food nutrition at one of our high schools.
Thank you for that. And this retreat is a working retreat, just let me say that. We have a large agenda and working on addressing some of these. Because I know somebody's going to say something.
Oh, you have it down to the minute.
Yes. Historically, we have not done retreats. And I think that's put us at a disadvantage on many fronts. So if I may, I would, I'd like to do the committees? Okay. So these are not all the committees that our current board serves on. These are the ones that I'm going to name now. They are fantastic and they're doing a whole lot of other things. These are just the ones that I'm going to mention today. So for our Tennessee Legislative Liaison and federal rep is going to be Ms. Rosales. And for insurance is going to be Ms. Sheila Bratton. Ms. Bratton, thank you so much for your time on the charter committee. And she told me that she has enjoyed that long enough. So she asked to be kind of related to that. So Mr. Tidwell is going to step into that role, and he's also going to be our chaplain. So.
I will help you, Kayla.
I appreciate that.
And I'll help with whatever I can. And so Ms. Claire Maxwell is going to be the head of our safety committee. And Mr. Young is going to be in our bus committee with Trey Lee, and that's a great group of people. And Ms. Katie Darby, we're probably going to reduce this name. This is just what we're calling it now. It's going to be the Fine Arts Private Business Committee. So she's heading that up. We've got a lot of business owners in the community that have volunteered after I twisted their arm a little bit to be on this committee. And so these are just a few of the things that we're working on on top of making sure we get some property and some buildings built.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would be glad to volunteer to work with REA.
I was going to ask you that. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is that okay? I had it written down here, so, okay. I don't have anything else. Anybody have any questions, any comments? Mr. Young?
Any updates on the madey property?
We're probably about four weeks away to getting the appraisal back. Once we get that appraisal back, I'll bring it to you, and then we'll go from there. He has harvested his corn, so I did talk to him about that, so that's gone now. So once we get the appraisal back, if y'all want to move forward after we see that, then we'll be ready to start testing. I have reached out to the city about sewer, and I've also reached out to CUD. I'll be writing will serve letters to them to get some feedback from them on can they provide services. That doesn't cost us anything, so I'm going to go ahead and do those.
Now, Dr. Sullivan, is this online? Can parents see this online? Okay, so the spreadsheet that they, okay. Okay, so the spreadsheet that we have, we're going to put it online if anybody listening or watching wants to have it. I'll entertain a motion.
Wait, I do have a general discuss, sorry, Madam Chairwoman. So I have a question in the policy for 6.317 is the one that we were looking at. Based on your recommendation, Mr. Young, is there any way, and maybe Mr. Reed can speak into this, if we can modify this policy so that we can include unique situations like the one that we have of what the protocol will be when there is a decision made by the DHS where the school wants a different outcome where there could be, like Mr. Young said, a meeting of the mind, if you will, type of situation, or just any other solution before it comes to the board? Like an in-between interim step?
Well, our policy is based on state law, the state statute. So that's what drives our policy. So our policy now mirrors what the state statute is. So if you want to do something like the additional step you're talking about doing, it would require an amendment to the state statute.
Okay. So it has to go before the state to make an legislature to amend the law to add that exception to that?
That additional option.
The additional option, correct, yeah. And which is the 49-6-3401, the Tennessee code.
I would say, I would add to that, of course, if the parents and the principal are in agreement to some kind of disciplinary action, reach an agreement, though, that's something that's not precluded by this.
Okay.
Process.
Okay.
If the parents and the principal decide to agree on some disciplinary action before it's gone, goes to DHA, that's something that they can do, agreement, if they choose to do it.
And how would that work out?
This process has already started, so the process has gone through the procedural steps we have now, which led it to the DHA and kind of got us to where we are today.
Mr. Reed, if I can, just real quick, that is something that, I understand where that comes from, but I worry about the process looking like we're starting to negotiate discipline.
Sure. I understand. I understand. But we're, this is just a very unique situation. There's a lot here when it comes to the parents appealing, but there's nothing, if there is, the school is appealing. So you've got protocol and direction and the law for when the parent appeals, but there's not a direction in the law for when the school appeals. And so it just puts the, it's just a very.
Disconnect.
Yeah, there's a disconnect there.
Understood. So I would say our policy is consistent with state law is now today. So that change would require some legislative changes.
No good legislator. No good legislator.
I know quite a few of them. Yeah, exactly. So, and this, the discipline has been, behavioral issues has been something I've been talking with the legislators, but this is, this piece of, this piece has not been something I have been bringing to them because I don't think anyone has dealt with something like this where there was a need. And so now it's a good thing to, well, I don't want to say it's a good thing, but I'm able to address with them.
I don't know. Yeah, but as TSBA said, this was the first case they were aware of where the school appealed.
Wow. See, there you go.
First case. I'm sure it's happened somewhere and they just never got guidance, but it is rare enough that they didn't even know where to go to get case law on it.
Well, yeah. So, okay. Well, thank you.
Needs to be addressed.
It does. It does need to be addressed, for sure.
Ms. Bratton?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's go. To adjourn.